Let's get going. Um, okay, um, hi, good, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, hello. Hiya. Thank you. Well, I thought, I knew, I knew it was gonna happen just so we got going. You're not gonna do it. Um, thank you. A good, good evening, everyone. Um, thank you, thank you all for coming. Um, today's meeting is open to the public and a warm welcome to you all. Um, my name's councillor Simon Clement-Jones and I'm the chair of the local area committee. Um, thanks very much to the, to the stall holders. Um, it's very informative, great stuff, I know some great conversations going on in terms of what people's local priorities are and how they'd like the council and others to respond. Boom, there we go, thank you. Um, before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves, I'll hand over to the committee clerk to read out the housekeeping arrangements.
Thank you, Chair. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point is at the front of the building, the exit is through the door where you've come in. The toilet facilities are situated back out through the door and along the corridor. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcasts via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we have hearing loops available. If you would like to use one, please let us know. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for that. Um, can I ask the members and officers around the table to introduce themselves?
I'm councillor Richard Shaw, um, the deputy chair of the committee and councillor for Beecham Green Hill Ward.
Hi, I'm Marion Elliott, Green councillor for Lidl's Valley.
Paul Turpin, another Green councillor for Lidl's Valley.
Peter Garber, Green councillor for Netheredge and Sharrow.
Nita Bishara, Labour councillor for Netheredge and Sharrow Ward.
I'm Diane Owens, I'm the South Lac manager.
Councillor Sophie Thornton, Liberal Democrat councillor for Beecham Green Hill.
I'm Jenny Skibber from Democratic Services, just take the minutes.
Councillor Ian Auckland-Greves, Park Ward.
And councillor Steve Erisbridge, Art Ward.
Councillor Alexi Diamond, another Green Party councillor from Lidl's Valley.
Thank you all very much. Um, then to, to item two, which is pauses for absence. Um, so as I understand it, we have Sue Auckland, councillor Sue Auckland and councillor Maruve, who may have been late, I think he may have been too delayed. So thank you for that. Um, before we proceed with the, with the agenda, I'll just explain a bit about how the, how the meeting's going to work. Um, we'll deal with form business first, so we'll go through those first and then, hopefully that won't take long, then we'll be into public questions and petitions. Um, so what I'll ask is, is people put their hands up, we do have plenty of time, so please do, please don't feel like you won't, you won't get a chance. Um, we can either, you can come and sit or stand over here with this microphone, or if you prefer, one of our, one of the, the LAC members of staff will come to you with a microphone, it's tied up to you, whatever you're comfortable with. Um, following that, we'll have a presentation from Diane Owens, the manager of the South Lac, and a presentation and a report in terms of an update on the spend from the budget, the £100,000 budget allocated to the South Lac. And then, obviously, time for a bit of public discussion and questions around, around that. Um, so into the, into the formal parts of business, exclusion of the present public, there was no, no items that are excluded. Declarations of interest, any members have a declaration of interest in any item? I don't see anyone doing that. Um, so we're through, we're then into minutes of previous meeting, I don't intend to go through them, just if anyone's got any points of accuracy on that, well, thank you for the actions.
Yeah, there's, um, a point of inaccuracy on a question that I answered from a member of the public. I made some notes and emailed them through to Diane earlier. Is that page nine and page 10? Just minor inaccuracies in the, in the recording of what was said.
So, I remember, I think, when we come to discussion of the allocation of funding, I was a member of this subgroup that took part in that discussion and one of the beneficiaries was Norton House Country Club, which I'm a member, I took no part in that discussion at the time and insofar as it's on the agenda this evening, it could be no vote from me from, from that. But the generality of the funding, I, I feel able to vote on that.
Understood, thank you. Um, anything further to add? If we can then approve the meeting with the edits that councillor Turpin suggests. Agreed? Thank you very much indeed. Okay, so thank you for dealing with that very quickly and swiftly, colleagues, and we can now move on to the public questions and petitions. Okay, so we've not received any public questions in advance, sorry? Oh, apologies. Oh, okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll put you down first, so I'll just, I'll just finish my spiel and you can down as the first question about that. Great. Of course, of course, it's entirely up to you, great, thank you. And yeah, so again, uh, as I say, I'll, we'll, we'll get through this question and then I'll, I'll invite others to put their hand up and we'll get you to ask questions however you'd like.
I've got two related questions, both of them are about the active neighbourhood scheme in Netheredge and in particular about the closure of Archer Lane. If I may preface my remarks first, I'm the secretary of the Banacross Neighbourhood Group. We've been going for 14 years or so, we've got 423 members and they're spread between Netheredge and Etlesall Wards. Around the area, in the southern part of Netheredge Ward, we've actually got about 150, 160 members or so. When the scheme first came through the consultation process, many people didn't really know what was going to be happening. It was only when the Archer Lane closure came about that we started to receive a very large number, not just from our members but from residents, giving comments to us about the effect that it had made on their lives, usually for the worse. We've collected quite a few dozens of comments of residents that have been coming to us verbally and also in writing, sending things into us. And whatever the merits of the scheme or demerits of the scheme, it's obvious so far that something like 90% of everything we've received have been in opposition to the scheme. But I don't want to go through all the stuff about the scheme itself, I want to tell you about two particular things that are very concerning to us. I should say, I live in the area as well, so it gets me too. The first of these is to do with emissions. One consequence of the scheme has been to push traffic down into the surrounding streets where there is now a great increase in congestion from one part to another, Brinkiff Edge Road at one end, down to Sheldon Road at the other. And this is, has, itself has brought a large increase in vehicle emissions. If you travel down Sheldon Road nowadays, particularly at the busier times of day, you will certainly be caught in a long queue and it will take you a long, long time before you're able to get through Abidale Road traffic lights. One resident there counted 800 cars passing her house in just a short timeframe. The emissions are dreadful. Well, we contacted the council about this and asked what measures were being taken to evaluate the emissions consequences from this scheme. And it was a freedom of information request and I have to tell you that in fact, air quality was never a consideration and that no emissions readings are being taken, so there's nothing to compare to before and afterwards. We think this is vital for a consideration by members when they come to evaluate the scheme, whether or not it goes on or not. But unfortunately, as much as we've tried to dig into who's been taking emissions readings around the whole area, we find only on one national, well, there are several websites globally and that the three places in which readings are being taken have actually got nothing to do with this. I mean, one of those is Salter Lane, Chelsea Road another, and Glen Road another, which is just inside the scheme. So it's a very great concern to us about that because air quality is bad and especially around Abidale Road. And we feel sorry for the children and the teachers of Netheredge Primary School who are having to experience this and greater nowadays. And social media is awash with comments about this. The second thing is something that's arisen in just fairly recent times, over the last six or seven weeks or so, we are being made aware of social and ethnic divides that have come about in the area. The actual boundary of the scheme itself almost entirely encompasses an area of very pleasant, very nice, middle class, white, professional housing on the hill going up from Sheldon Road up to Brinkiff Edge.
Yeah, sorry, I mean, you're very much, I mean, it's a very important issue, as no air quality there is difficult, but if I can ask, you could ask actual questions, thank you.
I'm, I'm coming very quickly.
I was hoping you were about to get to that point and it was always just that far away.
Thank you. I was telling myself before I started and I don't start waffling like you usually do, but I will come to a conclusion. But I'll just on that, just very quickly say, the Asian population is angered by what they see as the selection of a nice white area. And in social terms as well, the people who live at the bottom of the hill particularly, where the demography is different and the housing is different, are saying, why are we being dumped on? I've got two questions, as I said, they're related. I had a meeting with the, um, two officers, the main officers behind this scheme. I was told in that meeting, an hour and a half meeting, I was told in that meeting that the six month trial period had been extended and it was going to go up to summer of 2023.
I'm really gonna have to press you for a question.
Yeah.
Really, honestly, this time.
I'm, I'm now receiving information from different sources that there's some flexibility in all that, so my first question is, can we be given a definitive date on which the pilot study will end, when the officer report will go to members, and when there will be a member decision? So at the moment, it's extremely unclear about all that. The second question is to do with what happens to the data that the council says it's collecting? Because in the freedom of information request, it talks in very woolly terms about the selection of a certain audience and so on. I've spent quite a long time in my career doing data analysis, we're worried about this, so my second question is, can we have an assurance that before any officer recommendation goes to members, the public has an opportunity to examine and comment on its contents, including all data and data collection methodology used in their report? And that's it. Would you like the questions?
Very much, very much, thank you very much indeed. If not, I can ask you to give it to the committee secretary. Um, thank you, I say, very, very clear questions and as I say, a very, very important issue. Um, so I don't know if my colleagues have got anything they'd like to add to, add to that, as I say, really, I can't give you an answer on, on those specifics now, but obviously we'll make sure that we, we, we get to that, thank you very much indeed. So we're gonna go, one, two, apologies, oh, sorry. Yeah, so I did, I did ask, I did look around, I didn't see anyone, Alexi. Oh, right. Okay, off you go.
Thank you very much for that. Yeah, as one of the Netheredge councillors, we received a briefing just before Christmas on what was going to be happening. Again, no definite date was given, but I will press for a definite date, okay? So that's, uh, that's my, my task from here on, shall we say? We were also asking about air quality and how, how, how it had affected that and again, we got the same answer, there haven't really been any, um, any effort to, to measure air quality and so we were a bit nonplussed by that, so I'm hoping that there will be some further measurement of that. What we were told was that when, uh, up to the final date, there will still be plenty of opportunity for members of the public to make their feelings known about this. I'm really pleased you've been able to do that, that's part of what this consultation is all about, part of, part of what it's all about. We were also told that the possibilities at the end of that consultation amounted to about four different things. And this is just about the Archer enclosure, it's not about the other measures within the, um, the, the active neighbourhood scheme. It's leave it as it is, that's one of the opportunities, one of the possibilities. Take it away completely, that's another of the possibilities. Change it, and, and two different possibilities of changing it were put forward. One would be that it would have definite timings on it so that it would be closed at some times and open at others. And another was that it would be one way so that you could have traffic going up the hill but not traffic going down the hill on that. So, so, and I'm fairly certain that if any other possibility came forward, that would also be considered. So, um, I suppose what I'm saying is that what we're doing is keeping an eye on it, making sure that all the, um, the comments coming in from people like yourself, I personally have had quite a lot of comments in recent months, have more or less all been positive, so I've, I've got a different aspect on it from, from yourself. When it first came in, it was 60, 40 on the negative side, so, so we're still keeping an eye on that and still passing those comments forward. Air quality, I've already mentioned that. Netheredge Primary School are actually quite, um, cool about this, I visited them just before Christmas and talked to them about it and about other things. But you mentioned Sheldon Road and one of the things Netheredge Primary School want to do is to get a crossing on Sheldon Road. It's very dangerous for them, so again, I'm pressing for that at the moment. Sheldon Road is a pinch point and the traffic people know it and will be working on it, but I don't know what they're going to come up with yet. The Asian population, I suppose the, the crossing on, on Sheldon Road sort of feeds into that because it joins the, uh, the opposite side of Sheldon Road onto, into where the school is, so, so that is mainly an Asian area. So at the moment, whereas I can see what you're saying, I think that that was an accident of, not deliberately sought that way, if you know what I mean, it wasn't deliberately thought out that that was a very white area, et cetera. It, it's, unfortunately, it's turned out that way, but, but we are trying to remedy that as well, okay? So I've got a few, um, actions that I'll take away from your presentation here. One is try and get a definite date, another is try and make sure that that crossing is at least considered, given good consideration. And third, if there's any other possibilities other than the four I've given, that those are also put forward. And I hope that, that's, I hope that satisfies your, your questions at the moment.
Thank you, Peter. Yeah.
Thank you. Just to, first of all, and we've had our two meetings with the officers, again, the second one, which Peter's actually highlighted, just wanted to point out with the Sheldon Road, it was something, when the, the officers in our first meeting, they asked for any enhancements that we would like in the area, so because people had raised with me the difficulties of crossing from Sheldon Road because we've got the, the, um, the swimming baths, the park and also the school, so did raise one of that enhancements to have whether a pelican crossing or some sort of traffic lights, which again, Peter supported and Maruve as well, that we should have something there to, for safety. Moving on from there, we were informed that the second meeting will happen with some information, what enhancements that will take place from the ones that we put forward. In regards to your question regarding the pilot study, um, there, I also had some information where people thought the, um, the trial period extended. Unfortunately, I didn't have that information, so I did clarify with the officers and they informed me that, um, for, the trial period, first six months started on the 25th of April 2022 and the end date for that was 25th of October 2022. We, I then asked for a, um, the data when that would actually be present because one of my aims was to actually, um, find out what the data is showing because that, like Peter and I'm sure, uh, Maruve as well, I got completely a different, um, feedback from the, the community and the people, mixed views and some of the views, things that you've shared, they have been brought to my attention as well, which everything I've shared with the local committee, chair committees as well as the officers, so they're aware what the views are on the ground and what is happening on the ground and the level of impact of this closure of Archer Road. The focus, like Peter said, it was on Archer, Archer Road, sorry, Archer Lane, because that is one of the things that is actually being questioned a lot at the moment, even through my emails when I'm walking out and about in the community and also people phoning. Just to answer your other question, so the trial period, the first six months, I was informed that it's called a statutory consultation and this actually runs out 18 months and beyond that, they have to seal this ETO, which is obviously, it's experimental, um, travel, uh, trial that's, that's taking place, so it has, it goes on for 18 months, so it's six months, but no, none of the officers actually confirmed with me when I asked that question in terms of the extension of the six month trial, so it's formally, no request has formally been put forward to them to extend this trial period. So that's the information I got recently from the officers, again, due to this, people questioning that. And, um, they are currently analysing the data. We have had this meeting, which Peter's just shared, unfortunately, they haven't, with due respect, it takes time to analyse all that six months' data, but the full data's not out, which is what they're doing at the moment, which is what I'm waiting for as well in terms of getting back to the public. And one of the things they did ask is what we wanted, the next steps, and one of the things I'm very keen on is, and what we agreed from the beginning, is to be able to get that data back to the community and go through the data and let people be aware what is, what the trial actually shows, so that community can be involved and be part of that as well, that journey. So that's where things are, and just to add quickly on that, so. There, there were some, um, some issues around communication, so I have stressed the importance of making sure that the data does go widely, not just on social media but through the LACs, through us as councillors, as well as the two community groups that I've, I've picked up in Netheredge is, one with yourself, the Abidale-Banacross Community Group and the Neng, Neng. So I have actually put those two groups to the officers, that these are the widely established representation for those local residents, so they can actually get in touch with yourselves as well.
Thank you very much indeed. Richard, councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the, um, question. As councillor Bishara has, has said, the council certainly has 12 months from the end of the initial six month consultation period to make a decision based on the feedback received during, during the consultation. So, um, by October, November this year, there should be a report going to the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee, which is the decision-making body within the council that approves, or, yeah, approves or not, making traffic regulation orders, like permanent and so forth. I'm, I'm a member of that, that committee. So the, the report will be published, it's usually two weeks before, before the meeting and it's open to, open to the public and should be able to come along, ask questions about the report, you know, raise any, you know, questions or, you know, further objections and so on. And then the committee will, will make a decision. I'm not, I'm not expressing any, any view on the, on the closure itself, to say what that's the process. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Okay. Sorry, okay.
Yes, I've just got a few things to add. One of the things is that it, the trial has, has been somewhat hampered because of vigilantism and vandalism at the start of the trial, which did cause delays, which was unfortunate. Another thing to add is that it's quite normal to have temporary displacement of traffic while these sort of schemes bed in and research nationally does show in the main that once schemes bed in, behaviours do change and emissions do decrease because people do not use cars for short journeys and that is the aim of an active traffic neighbourhood. So I think it's important not to prejudge the data before the trial period has actually come to an end and before any decision is made. Also, there are other considerations aside from emissions and traffic, which is actually safety. So at the last LAC meeting, we did have somebody that came to the meeting to talk about how dangerous roads in the area was, but are, and enabling, reducing traffic, sorry, in these areas does actually improve safety, it allows children to get to school safely. So, yeah, I think I'd encourage everyone to bear with the trial and not prejudge it before it's finished. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I think you've had a, a very good, um, uh, so response from, from the, from the councillors around the table and what we will do is get a formal response to the, to the very specific questions that you raised. And thank you, thank you again for bringing this, this very important issue to us, for the, for the local committee to consider. I, I've got a, I will now open to, to, to questions. If, I'll, I'll give you a number and I'll, I'll ask you in that, in that order, so. Well, I was, was thinking about that as, as arms went up, but I know, I mean, others are asking questions around, you know, they've already kind of warned me that they're asking questions around road safety, so it might be that if I could ask anybody who wants to ask a question specifically on this, we have spent already. We have spent already almost quarter of an hour on this, so I really don't want to extend the debate. So I'm not going to ask my colleagues to answer any questions. But if you want to make any specific points and succinct points, then I will be timing you. So if I can, sorry, there's two people got their hands up at the very back and then front. I say this is going to be specifically on this, but I really. Sorry, sorry, can I ask you to.
The social ethnic divide and what a road closure would have to do with ethnicity and why people that live in Nether Edge would feel worse off. I am from Nether Edge, Wake Road, born and raised down there. It has been dominantly ethnic through the whole period of time that I've been there. My grandfather came in the windrush and that was the first property he owned in Great Britain on Wake Road. So I would like a clearer understanding of why ethnics at the bottom of the road feel dumped on to oppose to the superiority of the top of the road where ethnics still do live. So I'd just like to have a brief evaluation of this social ethnic divide within a road closure, because I mean, there's a lot of roadworks everywhere and that doesn't divide ethnics. So what?
Sorry, if I could just answer your question, I think the point is that was a point that was raised by the member of the public. And that was what they said, that's certainly not what the council feels. I mean, I think what the councillors, sorry, excuse me, if what the councillors around the table said was, you know, if people feel that way, they want to know why they feel that way and they want to do something about it. And that's how I feel. So certainly, as I say, you know, it's been raised, as I say, that comment was made. And you know, I'd like to know, you know, more about that, certainly. So as I say, I think it's been raised and thank you very much for your question. If I can go to you next and then you, if it's specifically on Abidale Road. Thank you.
I'll be very brief. I live on Sheldon Road. I know what this problem is. It is not going away. It's been like this for seven or eight months. Talking about bedding in is absolutely ridiculous. In fact, if anything, it's been worse recently over the Christmas period. It is appalling, the pollution that we're getting from about two in the afternoon until six o'clock. There are cars standing and just pumping out fumes. So please don't say that it's a bedding in matter. It definitely isn't. And it is a matter between the better off and the poorer. The people who live on Sheldon Road, a lot of them are living in bedsits.
Can I ask you to ask a question, please?
Okay, so my question is really, when are we going to be, when are we going to have the end of this terrible road closure? Thank you.
Thank you for that. I think that's covered everyone who wants to make a point on this. So we'll move on. I've got one, two in the middle and three. If I can ask you to go first.
So yeah, I'm a member of the public, just live on Folds Lane, which is in the Dalewood Abbey Lane area of the ward. I've lived there for 30 years and Folds Lane is quite a wide road. And increasingly, it's been used as a rat run. I don't know if the previous comments will affect that area, but anyway. Cars, I know in other parts of the ward that we've put in 20 mile an hour speed limits. So my question is, can we consider 20 mile an hour speed limits for the Folds Lane, Dalewood areas, as I know other areas of the nearby, Green Hill and soon to be Woodseats, I think, will soon have that. I've got cars doing well over 40 miles an hour down Folds Lane and also trucks. And there's supposed to be a 7.5 tonne limit on, where is it, Huxley Wood Road, which feeds into Folds Lane at the top. And one day, there's going to be a very terrible accident on Folds Lane especially. It's difficult to go faster on the other roads because they're much narrower, but they still need a 20 mile limit. And all I'm asking is, why can't we get that sorted? Just one more point. My daughter lives in Bristol and they changed the whole city to 20 miles an hour overnight virtually, a couple, two or three years ago. I'm not saying you should do that, but I've asked this question for about the last five or six years and I've had promises and no response. So I'll leave it to that.
Great. Thank you very much indeed for your question. I mean, as Simon, I know that we have the Batemore and Jordan Thor, Batemore or Jordan Thor, one of the other. And Jordan Thor, 20 mile an hour coming up. And just recently, I think we discussed the Gruon Greenham. As far as I know, what I know, there are no plans in the current round, which is taking the next year. But I think certainly, my position as chair to support you in this and ask, and I'm certain my ward colleagues will, as it does seem to be a bit of a missing piece in the puzzle in terms of 20 miles an hour zones. So yeah, we can hopefully put some of the weight of the local committee behind it and redouble our efforts and see if we can get this done in the next round, certainly after this one. And so anyone want to comment on that? Richard?
Thank you, Chair. As Simon says, it's not in the current programme for the current year. So the aim is, the council policy is to eventually have 20 mile an hour zones in all, well, certainly as many residential areas across the city as possible and is doing it incrementally. So over the 2022-23 period, the following areas of having 20 mile an hour zones. So that's Deerlands, Waterthorpe, Batemore and Jordan Thor, Burn Cross, Norton Lees, Carton Hall, Westfield, Herdings, High Green and Fullwood. So at the end of next year, we'll get another programme of areas. The Dalewood Beach area may be on that, but that list hasn't been drawn up yet. So hopefully, watch this space.
Just quickly, I just wanted to add because I know it's not related to your ward, but I did get some information because those people from our ward wanted similar on certain roads such as Brinkley Road. And one of the things that was shared, and I think it's important to share it widely here, is some of the officers were saying that they are supportive of the 20 miles per hour for the exact same reason, but one of the information they were getting was not many residents were supportive of it. So it was addressed to myself and I just thought if you are looking into that and you're feeling it would actually help, I think it would be really good to put it through your, whether it's ward councillors or that you do actually support that, because I think that's what I was told.
Thank you very much indeed. And Simon, I think that the local committees do actually have a role in this and ought to have more of a role because they can bring, you know, these kind of contentious decisions, these difficult decisions, a bit closer to the public. So I'd like to see, you know, stuff like 20 mile an hour zones being devolved down to this sort of level, really. So thank you for that.
Thank you. I was bitten too much whether to speak or not, just because it's a bit political. But when the 20 mile an hour zones were first mooted in Sheffield, green councillors at the time were calling for the whole city to be done at the same time, as you said. And it would have been cheaper and less confusing. Unfortunately, the Labour administration chose to do it in piecemeal, which is why we've still got bits that haven't been done. In our ward of Gleedless Valley, the one block, if you like, that hasn't been done yet is what we call the Olive Grove Triangle in Healy. And we've actually commissioned that and we're paying for that out of our own ward still money. And that'll be, I mean, it's not going to help you out, I'm afraid, because you don't live there. But that's going to be implemented well imminently, basically, and we've really, we fought for that. And like I said, we've also paid for it £68,000. So it's, and then that'll be the whole of our ward, all of the residential roads will be 20 mile an hour zones. So do get onto your ward councillors, because if they can do the same, you know, if we can do it, then they can do it.
A little bit of politics, thank you. Sorry, my eyes. Thank you. So I've got number two in the middle. Thank you. If you want to come to all.
Hi, I'm a local resident in Healy and my question's about the master plan. Is that okay to ask a question now for the Gleedless Valley estate? So I'm also, it happens, an architect and I've been working with people on the estate a bit on looking at the quality of their housing. So Sheffield City Council has identified £90 million to refurbish the housing and the environment on the estate. So it's a fantastic opportunity for Sheffield City Council to show how it can do things really well in terms of developing a whole area in the direction of low carbon, zero carbon housing environments, the way people live. But what worries me is that Sheffield City Council could do this in their usual way, which will be alienating the majority of people who live on the estate. And the way they alienate people is the example given by one of the council tenants in this meeting, which is she fought for her house to be retrofitted, which is basically putting in insulation.
Can I ask you to ask a question, please?
Yeah, so, yeah, can I just identify the problem and then I'll ask the question? Okay, sorry. Problem is that people don't want their houses to be refurbished because it's so disruptive. And so they've turned down council offices when council officers have come to survey them about refurbishing their housing. So my question is, one, has Sheffield City Council got a programme date yet for the refurbishment of the council housing that's going to be carried out via the master plan? Two, what provisions are being made in this programme of refurbishment for engaging people who live on the estate? Particularly in terms of training people to give support to residents to move their furniture, to take up their carpets, to do all the things which are necessary when you come to retrofitting a house for low energy consumption. That's question two. Question three is what provision is being made in the programme for engaging, training, employing young people who go to schools on this estate? So the £90 million could be used to highlight a fantastic programme of what is caused by Labour for a Green New Deal and also, I think, Green Party for a Green New Deal. Community wealth building, so you actually build the capacity and the jobs and the skills and the education of people who live in this area, rather than outsourcing it to the usual contractors who come in and do a bit of a bad job and put off the residents because they don't know how to treat people well. So are those clear questions?
Yes, I think we've got very clear questions there in terms of. I mean, I think the one thing I want to say is that what you're describing there just took me right back to when the council did the decent homes and we had all of those same issues. So what I really, really hope is some of that institutional knowledge of how that was done. And I think they've made mistakes during decent homes. But I know that certainly the approach that they took, that they kind of meant business in terms of those questions of, you know, being sensitive about, you know, people's needs.
Can I just say that at the moment, there is no provision for training in Sheffield in what is called retrofitting skills. There is no provision. It's shameful.
Thanks.
And we need to know what Sheffield City Council is doing about it.
Great, thank you. So I see if any of my colleagues would like to come in. I've got Paul. Before I bring Paul in, is anyone else want to comment? Okay, Paul, then we'll move on. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so there's quite a lot to try and answer there, but I shall try. Yeah, so I've been involved in the master plan for four years, which is, well, I've been a councillor for almost four years. And when I started, there was five Labour councillors and myself. I was told at my first meeting that I wasn't welcome, but I could come anyway. And I basically fought and fought for the people of Gleedless to improve what that master plan was going to be, which was basically the same model as the Harringay Development Vehicle, which was to gentrify the estate and hand it over to private developers. So by last year, it was five Greens and one Labour involved in the master plan. So we have got pledges to employ local people. We have got pledges to train local people. Actually, I initiated the work when I was on the executive last year to develop a green skills and job strategy, which now, I mean, it's been a long time coming and the council only had one person to work on it and it wasn't their full-time role. But it's been quite well developed and we're having a meeting next week or the week after to see where we're up to with that. One of the difficulties with it is that the trainers are few and far between. So you can get people who would like to do the training, but then you haven't got the person to teach them. So it has been, there have been obstacles in the way. Was that it?
Thank you. I've seen a couple of hands have gone up. I know this in the meantime. So I'm going to give you a number. You've got four there, so you can put your hand down. Five there, got you now. So you can put your hand down. So you're number four. And you're about to be next, assuming I've dealt with all my councillors. So one thing, before we move on, if you have asked a question, what we will do is get back to you with a written answer to that question. So if you can, well, please do leave your contact details with Adeola over there or scribble on a piece of paper and give them to me at the end. But do please give us your name and contact details so that we can get back to you. So thank you for your patience. Number three.
Hello. What I want to start talking about, and I will be fairly brief and get to the point if I can, is part of the Connecting Nether Edge City Centre scheme, which follows on from that Nether Edge, but it's a different one. This one is specifically about encouraging no car use, walking, cycling. And as such, they applied for the money from the government, got it, put out the plans. Everybody said, great, we'd love to see less cars in the area. But we know what's happened post-Covid, that everybody's got back into their cars. There's no public transport. More people get back into their cars. It's been very cold. More people get back into their cars. So we've got this terrible traffic problem, which everybody's talked about so far. As part of the Connecting Sheffield, what they wanted to do is get rid of the underpass at the bottom of Cemetery Road and fill it in. The reason being that the stream runs underneath it. Now, if anybody here can tell me why filling in on top of a stream makes it better, I don't know. So the question is, can you all help me find out or help us, the community that are interested, why they're sticking so solidly to that proposal when we keep saying, but it doesn't make sense? Most people want to go through the underpass because it keeps them away from traffic fumes. We agree it's ugly at the moment and the access for mobility scooters, which I use, or prams or bikes, isn't brilliant. But there's enough space each side to do something really creative, which is what they say they want to do. So please, can the councillors here help us unravel why we're reading such a stumbling block?
Okay, no promises, but we'll do what we can.
The other thing that goes with it is with the money that comes with it, at the bottom of Cemetery Road, Boston Street, London Road, going over towards Aldi and the new student blocks, a new era Chinese block. The population of that area must have quadrupled in the last few years. The junction, the traffic lights there, has not changed in the slightest. It is really dangerous. There's no proper pedestrian. There's no proper pedestrian crossings and the traffic lights are set so people dash across and nearly get killed. And people jump the lights because they have to wait so long. And it's a nightmare situation. When I've spoken to them about it.
Question?
When I've spoken to these people about it, they say, it's nothing in this scheme. We can't do anything about it. Why? Where's the joined up thinking that makes a city work?
Thank you.
Can we bring it to this committee to get some connections between it to make it work? Please. Thank you.
I, I'd love to. Unfortunately, it's, it's not in, it's not in my power. And as I say, you know, that, that's one of the things that to some degree I'd like, I'd like to see, um, is to bring that, that decision-making a bit closer. But I think we've got some specific questions from you there. Um, I don't know if my colleagues want to make any comments. Um, I'll, I'll let councillor Bashrak go first and then Peter. Um, what I will say is that I'm hoping to finish this around seven o'clock. I've got, um, two more people who've already put their hands up. I've got one more person there who's number six. And if, if after that I can then, um, call it to a close, um, away you go. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Caroline. Um, you've, um, you've just mentioned around this and what I can do is, um, take that up and, uh, look into it because if it's not, um, if they've mentioned to you that it's not part of the scheme or anything, but I'm sure we can still look into it and, yeah. So if it's okay, I can get into it, should be. Okay.
Councillor Garbutt?
Yes, um, I'll, uh, I, I think between us, we'll be able to sort something out there, certainly on the, uh, the Connecting Sheffield route. Um, the, the second one on, on the Cemetery Road, London Road junction, which I'm, I'm very, very familiar with. I don't actually think that falls within the South Lac area, um, but I will follow it up. I think it's in central area. Um, but I will follow it up and, uh, we will alert Central Lac to it as well so that they've got, uh, they've got a handle on it as well. Okay.
Great job done. Um, so I've got number four.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Beverly Bennett. I'm, I'm here to represent my organisation. We are called TIC, the Independent Caribbean Collective. Some of you might have heard from us or heard about us. So I'm here to talk about funding. Um, in November, we applied for the South Lac to, um, help with workshops and things we are setting up in the Nether Edge area at the Dalton Court. Now, we waited till the seventeenth to hear back from the South Lac. We did fill out the forms, paper and internet. And we would like to know why we was told that it was oversubscribed and why we didn't even get, uh, you know, maybe a, a little portion of the funding put towards what we are doing. Now, Nether Edge needs to be more diverse. Everybody's talking about Asian and the whites and stuff like that. I'm mixed race, main. I'm dark in colour, but I'm mixed race. Yeah. Now I'm talking for both sides of the party here in Nether Edge. Because at the end of the day, I've grown up in Nether Edge. I'm fifty odd years old. Now I've seen the dramatic change in Nether Edge and I want to bring back the joy in Nether Edge and make it more diverse and equality how it used to be in the eighties when I was growing up there. I went to Abidale Middle School. It was a very diverse school. We had a language centre. Yes, we all mixed and got on with each other. Now, what I am noticing lately is that the Caribbean community are being left out, the Caribbean community being left out. No one ever brings up our, us at all, even in these conversations today. Nobody's bringing us up. So we are always feel, well, I feel myself that we are always left out in anything to do with funding. And I've put on many events in Sharrow and Nether Edge, funded it myself out of my unpaid carers allowance because I look after my terminally ill white husband. Yes. And I paid for many events that have happened in Sheffield, Broom Hall and everything to bring the city back more diverse and equality into Sheffield, how it was. This is why we can't win a competition of city of culture because you're leaving a certain culture out. Like I said, in my documentary, if you watched it, it was called Passing the Baton.
I think we're getting a bit wide and out yet.
I just like to know why every time my organisation always gets a hit back and knockback with funding. I don't usually come back and borrow off anybody. I usually do our own. But when we are asked to fill out forms for our organisation for help, we never get any help. And I would like to know the answer why. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for that. Um, I don't know if any local councillors would like to comment? I mean, I think, excuse me, if I can just start. In, in terms of how the, how the money was allocated, um, we, we strive from the very beginning to, to ensure that we involve all kinds of organisations across the board. Before we even started, um, we went out and consulted with all kinds of people across the board, found them out online, in person, at events like this, to make sure that we, we were covering all, all that we could. Um, we then, um, we then spoke to young people, um, we spoke to, to all sorts of groups. And then we sat back and decided and, and we designed the process around that to make sure that it was, it was as inclusive as possible. Um, and I can assure you that, you know, in terms of, um, of how it is, that's, you know, we would not play any kind of favourites and we treated everyone the same. Um, we had a process in terms of allocating that money. Um, I'm sorry that this time you weren't successful.
It happens all the time.
And I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, this isn't, this is in the back. Well, I'm, I'm trying to answer, answer your question. I, I understand. I, sorry, if I can. I, I can, uh, can you please, can you please let me answer, answer the question? I'm going to have to, and then I'm going to bring councillor. I'm, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to bring in councillor Garbutt, um, after this. So as I say, you know, I honestly do not recognise the process that you're describing to me. If that is genuinely, um, how you feel, then I'm, I'm very, very sorry. I know there are other circumstances surrounding this, um, that, that you may not, not necessarily want to bring up. Um, but you know, in those terms, we, we are entirely fair across all of the organisations and go that extra mile to make sure of it. And if we weren't, I would be very, very upset indeed. I would be upset as you are now. And I, I, I understand that you're upset. I'm going to bring councillor Garbutt in now. Apologies. If I can allow, if I can allow. Can I, can I, can I allow councillor Garbutt to come in next? Thank you.
Thanks, Bev. Very good to see you. Um, yeah, what I propose to do then is to look at how that, how, what's, what's happened has happened and get back to you on that. Okay. Uh, so I, um, I've been trying to work out how, how we allocated the, the funding. Um, but my computer isn't working. I'm sorry. So, um, I can't answer at the moment. But I will, uh, over the next week, make sure that I, I do that, that piece of work and get back to you.
I mean, she said that the Lac wants to work with you. Absolutely, we do. Thank you. If I can bring councillor Bashrak in.
First of all, Bev, I hear and sympathise. You know exactly what you've shared and I'm sorry that you feel that way. Um, myself being on, uh, the ward part and as well as the others, uh, I have, uh, made every effort and I've seen everybody else is trying to make sure that when the decisions are made, it's fair. But I know when you've had refusal all the time, uh, how it could feel because I've been on that end, uh, in the community. So again, uh, like Peter, I think, uh, we would like to look, look at, look into, uh, in terms of what happened with your specific application, but I feel. You do fantastic work.
They should. Am I right?
Absolutely.
Yes, so we would like some help back. So let's work together and build Nether Edge back to how it used to be back in the eighties. Stop splitting us.
Can I ask you to land?
So absolutely, and took, took everything what you've mentioned. Obviously, we take every person, every application seriously and every, uh, organisation that is including yourself, who does some fantastic work in the community. Yes, uh, this was all new to me, but the oversubscription, it was then, that just shows how, what the demand is like. But the limited pot of money, uh, I was, uh, in one of the meetings, I don't know if it was the same application, but where there was a lot of oversubscribed organisations, obviously every person in this, uh, current climate needing funds to get on with, helping the community. And unfortunately, there was hard decisions to made in that one particular one because of those reasons. And then going through, um, and trying to identify organisation. The people did do their best to make it as fair as possible. Um, and to be honest, I do know your organisation and everything, but the name itself, I didn't, uh, know what it was called. But we will look into that again collectively because obviously we sit together when we make those decisions. But I can assure you that from, uh, coming from also, uh, a Caribbean background, I haven't, I am making every effort that it is fair and it's, uh, every money. We've got new projects that come about, some people who aren't even aware of funding what's out there. That is a big problem, which you're probably aware of as well, that many people, there's a lot of support out there, but the awareness is low. And we're making an effort to make sure every organisation, whether it's small, big or established, has a fair chance of getting support.
Sorry, yeah, I mean, I think, so we, we do need to, to, can I, can I, can I ask, can I ask, we? Can I, I can't, apologies, apologies. Please, please let me answer. Please let me answer. So, so what, what the commitment I'll make is, is that, you know, we will work with you. I can't, I can't guarantee any public money. You know, that's, that's not unfortunately how, that's not unfortunately, that's not unfortunately how it works. Thank you. Thank you very much. Please.
I have to use my own money to make sure that we are recognising the community, you know, rather than coming to beg. My dad has been here from the English generation as well, never begging nobody for anything. But now the Queen, well, the King now has noticed and recognised my father, who you much know in your archives in Sheffield, that he will never come and beg and borrow anything, yet he has been ordered, offered the British Citizen Award from the Queen for his recognition in Sheffield. And I am going to take after my father and be as strong as him and make sure that we're all equal. You always talk about people of colour. You say you don't use colour. So why using the word people of colour? Why don't we use the people of every colour? Because we are people, not a colour. Thank you.
Please, thank you very much indeed. And as I say, please, please, other people have questions and we spent a great deal of time on this one specific, one specific thing. And I understand that you're emotional and I'm feeling quite emotional now. So I think, I think, as I say, we want to work with you and that's my commitment. We, we will work with you always. Um, thank you for that. Um, if I can now move on to question number five. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be completely brief. Uh, I was visiting one of the largest mosques on Waltham Road today and there is a takeaway restaurant just across the mosque. And we went for a cup of tea over there. And when we came out with friends, there were other people, they were standing outside with the disposable cups. And, uh, when they finished tea, so then they tried to find a litter bin just to go and bin the stuff. But unfortunately, they couldn't find, the good people were able to take the, uh, cups with them. But others, they dropped that, uh, disposable cups on the pavement. There was a huge litter there. Uh, there is another takeaway, uh, application, planning application has been approved just next to that takeaway. And I'm surprised why, uh, the planning, uh, committee hasn't been able to attach a condition that there will be a bin provided. Or my question is, can this local area, uh, committee provide an urgent bin that otherwise the litter is a serious problem around there? So how will it resolve this issue? Second thing is, if I have also been outside the gates of Sharrow School on Stitwell Road, where, uh, one of the local residents, uh, told me despite numerous complaints, uh, they have been asking to empty the large bins, uh, but haven't been emptied, uh, for so long. Can I ask whose responsibility is to empty the bins? And can this, uh, local area or local councillors, uh, take up this issue? And if they can provide the bin and also empty the, uh, bins on Stitwell Road as quickly as possible? Thank you very much.
Great. Two, um, very concise and clear questions. Thank you very much indeed for that. I don't know if anyone, if any colleagues with local knowledge, um, would like to chip in. Um, thank you. Councillor Garbutt?
Thanks, Mr Morif. Um, yes, uh, been on Waltham Road. Um, I'll certainly follow that one up and see if we can get one fairly quickly. Uh, who, who is responsible for, uh, um, emptying the bins on Stitwell Road, did you say? Just by Sharrow School? Okay. And again, I'll follow that one up and make sure that, uh, that's done on a, a regular basis. Uh, I do know that because it's very close to the school, it gets full very quickly. So I do know that. Um, but I will follow that up and make sure it gets emptied on a, perhaps a much more regular basis than it currently is. Okay, thanks.
Great. And we'll, we'll get back to your writing in terms of the bins on, uh, on Sharrow Lane. Um, and let's hope we can get some action for a bin. Um, thank you very much. I've got final question of the evening. Take it away. Thank you.
Hello, um, my name's Amy Mount and I'm actually the Graves, uh, Park Labour Party candidate for the local elections in May. But I wanted to start by just thanking all the councillors here, um, for listening and showing up and responding to the community's questions. And it's a Thursday night for all of you, like it is for all of us. So, yeah, really, really appreciate that. Um, my question is, um, actually about, um, the street art proposal within the, the community plan. Um, and I was just wondering specifically whether the voluntary sector partners have been identified yet? Because there was a similar idea that got scuppered by the pandemic, um, that would have involved Double Six Youth Club in, in wood seats. Um, so it'd be really great if they could be considered again for this new initiative, which I really like the sound of. I think there has been a bit of a spate of graffiti in the Chesterfield Road and Abbey Lane area recently. So it'd be great to see some positive activity, uh, in response to that.
Thank you very much indeed. Um, thanks very much for those, um, again, relatively, um, easy questions. Uh, I mean, in terms of, of the project, um, nothing set in stone until, um, until we can allocate some money and, and sort of, and look at the process. I mean, it is, it is very early stage, but I know lots of my colleagues are very supportive of the project. Um, and we, we, you know, the council isn't, isn't the person to run these things. So absolutely, we need to, need to involve Double Six um, and also the VCF. And I think that's, um, certainly, you know, been the focus of a great deal of the work of this Lac is working with, um, local organisations because as I say, you know, we don't know best. Um, and you know, we're not necessarily always best served to, uh, to do with these things. So, um, thank you very, very much indeed for that. Um, and as I say, when it, when it comes out, we can send out some, send out details of, um, how to get involved in that. Um, and, um, and as I, we're just about to be, um, and look at, um, the local plans. So at the end of that, um, so if I can just thank every single one of, of the questioners and, and thank my colleagues for their, um, every light thoughts on the, on all of those various areas. And as I say, if you, if you have asked a question, please make sure you've got contact details because we will, um, get you a formal response. Um, and I know obviously my colleagues will take, um, take the areas, um, that they're responsible for, um, forward as well. So it was the most exciting bit, isn't it? Um, so, um, so I'll now hand over it to Diane, the South, um, Local Area Committee Manager, um, who's going to give us an update on the South, um, Local Area Community Plan. Um, and then after that, hopefully, well, then, um, look at, um, the, uh, the actual form part of the, that, that business, which is the report, um, and agree that and hopefully get on with, um, the work going forward. Um, so take it away.
There isn't a clicky thing, so I might have to do the next slide, please. Um, so yeah, hi, everyone and, uh, some of you I know, nice to see you again. Nice to see your faces here as well. So yeah, hi everyone and some of you I know, nice to see you again, nice to see your faces here as well this evening. So I was just going to give a bit of a brief update really about the South Lac Community Plan. And two stages update, one, the first stage, bit of a presentation, just to give you a bit of an update on some of the work that's been happening and the budget that was allocated to the South Lac and what that's been spent on. And then the second, you will have seen there was a written report that went out with the papers for this meeting and that was about the remaining budget that the South Lac has and what the plans are for that budget. So two-stage update. So I won't go on this because it's quarter past seven and there's, you know, a little bit of background information. So this was just a little bit of background in terms of the South Lac and I know most of the people here have been to some of the public meetings before, so this is the neighbourhoods we cover and the area that we cover. Each lac covers four wards and these are the neighbourhoods within the South Lac. But I'm more wanting to focus on the community plan. So our community plan has six themes in it and there's an awful lot of work that's been happening over the last, well, since the last meeting and since the lacs were established. So I've just picked out a few key highlights today. I'm not going to talk about everything, so I've just picked out some highlights, some themes and particularly where budget was allocated. So I'll just take you through that. But the first thing when I started to write this presentation that was in my head was just, this is just very much about partnerships. So if I accidentally at any point say, I, it's always we, you know, the committee work very, very closely with many of the community groups, you know, that are represented here tonight and with you as local residents as well. So everything that's been delivered through this plan has very much been about partnerships. And the council actually has just committed to three new corporate values and one of them is together we get things done. And that just really resonated with me as I was writing this presentation this afternoon because I really think that has been at the heart of how everything's been delivered through the South Lac Community Plan to date. So like I say, I'll just pick out a few key highlights and they are mainly where we've had budget allocation. So one of the budgets given to the South Lac was £57,000 to spend on fly tipping and graffiti hotspots. So over the last few months, we've been talking to communities, talking to community groups, identifying where some of those hotspots are for fly tipping. This budget was very much about where we could have a long-term preventative approach. So it was about looking at where those hotspots are and where we could do something that would really prevent this fly tipping from happening in the future. So we've identified quite a few hotspots across the whole of the South Lac area. And these, some of the interventions might be things like putting boulders in to stop vehicles being able to get onto a green space where there might be some dumping or putting some fencing in that would again prevent people from fly tipping. So we've got a little list and that's now being looked at in terms of quotes for those pieces of work. So that will come back to the committee hopefully in the next month. And then once we've got that, the committee will need to look at that and then have a look at, you know, with that £57,000 budget, you know, which of those projects, you know, should that should be prioritised on. So hopefully by the March meeting, we'll be able to have a bit more information for you about which of those projects will go ahead. If there's anything left from the budget at that point, the committee can look at a bit more at some of the fly tipping hotspots or we can start to look at graffiti hotspots. And I think if the committee does want to look at graffiti hotspots, we will very much again be looking at street art as a solution, as a preventative solution for some of those hotspots. So the other area I wanted to talk about under the environment and green spaces was the Lum. So this was a specific action in the community plan was to do some clear-up work on the Lum. If any of you know the Lum, it's an area in Gleamless Valley. I now know that the Lum is a Saxon word for ravine, so for anyone who knows the Lum, it really is a very, it's a very steep green space area and it's had a longstanding challenge with fly tipping. And there's been evidence gathered from within the Lum of people coming in from outside of, you know, outside of the area, across different parts of the city and potentially outside of Sheffield even, and sadly, fly tipping on the area. So there's a lot of waste accumulated there. The Meersbrook runs through the centre because of the nature of it, of the site, the litter and the fly tips can run down into the Meersbrook. So a lot of work needs to be done to clear it. So the South Lac allocated £10,000 of its budget, £5,000 to be spent on some heavy-duty equipment because to clear that site, you need to take in winches and diggers. So that started to happen over December and is still happening through January. Some of the people in the room are very involved in that, so Sheffield Litter Pickers and Gleamless Valley Wildlife Trust are both working alongside our Parks and Green Spaces teams to do some of that work. So this is, this is some of the before photos. I haven't got any after photos, but Irene, thank you for the photos you sent me. They are going to come up in a second of some of the activity that's been happening. So next slide, please, thank you. So some of the £10,000, £5,000 was for the equipment, that heavy-duty equipment. The other £5,000 is to do some, what might I say, sort of, you know, public realm sort of works, but some nice little interventions around sort of nature and heritage. So the plan is to put some fairy doors into the Lum, so there's some beautiful trees there that we can use to put some fairy doors and to put a bit of information about, you know, about the local heritage and the local history and maybe some nature boards as well. So there is a project being led by the TARA, Gleamless Valley TARA, to do some nature trail work through Rolston Woods, which is the woodland next door. So this wanted to, this project wanted to just link in to what's happening there. So we haven't started this work yet. We've started, the clearance work is happening, but then the plan is to work with the TARA and the local community and the groups I've just mentioned on that next stage. So yeah, these are some photos from the partnership work that's been happening to clear, to clear up at the Lum. So the other theme, just to give some information, was about crime and community safety. So there was a commitment in the community plan to install some additional speed indication devices, one per ward across the lac, so that's now happening. Those speed indication devices are out there in the community and they will be rotated around hotspots. And we got that hotspot information from, you know, conversations with the community and community groups as well, so that's happening. Another priority in our community plan was about neighbourhood action groups. So these are partnership groups with the police and other partners, other parts of the council, like housing, but voluntary sector groups as well, who come together as a partnership to look at crime and social behaviour. So we have three neighbourhood action groups in the South Lac. And our team, working alongside councillors, are very active and involved with those groups. And one of the things that happened last year is one of the operations that happened in the Sharrow, through the Sharrow Neighbourhood Action Group, there was actually a nomination for the Operation Tranquilo team and the South Lac were recognised as part of that for, to be nominated for the Outstanding Problem Solving Ward as part of the Sheffield Police Awards in 2022. So that was a nice recognition of the work that was happening through the neighbourhood action group and the involvement that this team has had in that work as well. So moving on to children, young people and families. So I just want to give a bit of an update because we've done quite a bit of work, I think, around trying to engage with children, well, with young people. We worked with the council's youth services team in November to put on a youth conference that was held in the town hall with local young people from our secondary schools. We wanted to talk to young people about real issues in their area, so we talked to them about their local shopping areas and some of the issues that they, that they thought those areas might have and how we could improve some of those local shopping areas. And we've been trying to do some of that consultation with yourself tonight and Dan, our business adviser, is here this evening. And have you been speaking to Dan? We're trying to build up that picture of people's concerns about local shopping areas and how we might be able to support local shopping areas to, to, I guess, to kind of continue to get footfall post-COVID. So it's about that kind of support for local businesses and local shops to continue to grow post-COVID. So that was a youth conference that we did, talking to young people. We also talked to them about crime and community safety during that youth conference. The other key thing that we've done under children, young people and families was from the budget that the local area committee had. So each local area committee had £100,000. We were also, each committee then was given an extra £10,000 for youth activities. So this local area committee had allocated £20,000 of its budget. We were then given an extra 10, it gave us 30. And the decision was to put that money out to the local community and to community organisations to bid to run youth projects. So this was about October time of last year, we worked with our youth cabinet representatives to talk to them about priorities for young people. And so a subgroup of councillors met with the youth cabinet reps, we sat down with the young people, talked to them about the priorities, talked to them about how we should do, how we should allocate this funding, what kind of activities did young people want to see happening? What sort of amounts of funding should we put out there? So the young people worked with us on that and that was really positive. And the young people actually then sat on the subgroup to assess the applications. So again, that funding was oversubscribed. We allocated 10 organisations funding with an average grant award of £3,800 and the young people got involved with that and helped us make those decisions. So that was really positive. So that was £30,000 of the budget. And one of the other areas that we allocated budget was around community capacity building. So the committee allocated £40,000 from its £100,000 budget for community capacity building. And that was to support voluntary community sector organisations with building their capacity. That could include responding to the cost of living crisis. So we did say that could be, if your organisation needs to build capacity to respond to the cost of living crisis, that might be about providing a warm space or providing some hot drinks for people. And that was, that was eligible, you know, for groups could apply for funding for that. Or it could be if you wanted to develop your organisation, you wanted to increase your volunteers, you wanted to look at communications, you wanted to look at a long-term strategy to help sustain your organisation, to develop a long-term plan. It was quite sort of flexible, I think, in terms of the other things it could support. And this funding was very heavily oversubscribed. We had an awful lot of applications. And I think also because it did cover the cost of living crisis as well, there was a lot of applications for cost of living crisis support. So the actual part of funding was £40,000. We had £107,000 worth of applications. And so very, very hard decisions to be made in terms of allocating that money. So many worthwhile projects bid. And like I say, actually, the majority of those projects were, did have a cost of living crisis element to them. So 23 organisations received full or partial funding because of that level of oversubscribing. There was quite a lot of organisations that only got partial funding and there was quite a number of organisations who sadly, you know, were unable to fund. So it was very heavily oversubscribed. But I think still, the funding was able to support some really, really good work out in the community. And we worked really quickly before Christmas to get payments out to groups before Christmas. So they had that money to respond to the cost of living crisis over Christmas. So this funding only closed on the 2nd of December. We got most of those payments out before Christmas to groups as quickly as we could to try and get that money. So yeah, people had the support they needed. And lastly, I just wanted to give a brief update because the other work that happens through, through the committee and that the South Lac team support is obviously the ward funding and the community infrastructure levy funding as well. So just to say, so far this, this year, and really the ward pot funding sort of starts from about June, we've had 39 small grants that have been given out across the South Lac through ward pot funding and that funds a wide range of activities. It can have from community events, activities, equipment, support local groups. And so far, we've had 23 projects supported through community infrastructure levy. And again, that's allocated by local ward councillors and that can include things like playground equipment and small-scale highways improvement. So that work also happens through, through the work of the local area committee. And that was all I was going to say really. Like I say, I wanted to focus more on where the budget had been spent and then just give you some other brief updates because there's just so, there's a lot that happens. But yes, that was my update.
Brilliant. Thank you. As I say, we are taking the report after this, which has all the, all the detail and is a more formal part. I will allow a few questions. We've only got five minutes left. Althaus, take you. Do you want, is it okay if you can come to the microphone or we can take it to you?
Hi, just a quick question, please. What's the cost of fly tipping in Sheffield per annum?
I mean, there's a, there's a cost of clearing it up. There's a, there's a, there's all sorts of costs. I mean, I don't know, but we can certainly get you an answer to that question if you really like one. Oh, sorry, go for it. We might have it.
It's an interesting question actually because under the AMI contract, if it is on the highways, the fly tipping, AMI contractually abides to clear it up regardless of what the cost is. So they, they might be able to tell us, but it doesn't actually cost us any extra for that fly tipping.
I just wondered if we got a cost for that, what sort of strategy we could use to actually try and prevent it? Inasmuch as, what about CCTV? I mean, I know that's probably like a needle in a haystack, but what we're trying to do is prevent it, not just clean up after people throw it down.
Is it good, go for it, Diane?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think the budget that was devolved to the local area committee was, was very much exactly like you're saying, was about prevention. So it was, it was very much, we identified sites, we've been out with, with the relevant teams and then looking at, okay, how, with our environmental protection services officers and that's where their expertise is. That's what they deal with all the time, they deal with fly tipping sites. And they will go in and assess a site for us and say, okay, how can we prevent here? And sometimes CCTV can be a good, a good option. CCTV is much better at capturing vehicular fly tipping than individuals and the burden of proof is still, is quite high. So the CCTV can, it can be a good solution, but it depends on the location and it depends on where you can locate the CCTV and it has to be able to capture quality evidence. So it absolutely is considered as one of the options. But sometimes there are other, probably less costly, but, you know, equally effective solutions. So for one of our sites, we are literally just looking at a couple of big concrete boulders because it will stop vehicles being able to pull onto a site. And that's a site in Gleamless Valley where fly tipping happens. So yeah, absolutely. This, the money that the committee's got is very prevention-focused.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. As I say, it's a, it's a subject that we've returned to many, many times in our, in our, in our kind of members' meetings. And I'm sure we'll be, we'll be back to it again. I've got two more questions then I'm going to bring us to a close, then see if there's any points that my colleagues would like to make. And then that would be more or less the end of the meeting. Yeah, so I've got one and two. Away you go, Murif. Oh, yeah, yeah, yes.
Just keep a question again. Is it relation to community infrastructure levy?
Yes.
I have been in touch with a few community organisations who have asked these questions. And although we try to clarify through council colleagues, but unfortunately, still there are some questions that we need to get the answer. First of all, can you tell us how, I understand this thing used to be section 106, planning again money, and now it's called community infrastructure levy. Can you tell us how much do you raise in one year, the council raised the whole money? How much do you, do they allocate to the lacs and the wards? And how much is remaining money remain with the council and where it's spent? Can that spend on the services provided by the local groups and community organisations? Or it has to be spent on infrastructure like highways and the community buildings only? That's my question.
Thank you. Thank you very much indeed for that. And it is, the whole funding through community infrastructure levy and the section 107 and 106, et cetera, is, you know, has been somewhat of a political football, I think, to some degree, but only one side's ever been kicking it. In terms of community, in community infrastructure levy, I mean, literally, I think, we're two weeks ago, we were having a conversation with the local area committee chairs, so that's members from all parties, had a meeting with legal of the council, Terry Fox. And from all parties it came that, you know, something needs to be done about the fairness of the community infrastructure levy. You know, why is only 20% of it, if that, you know, I mean, we can, no, it's a very small amount, is actually under control of local area councillors. And obviously, we're, we're at the, we're at the sharp end. And yet the bulk of the money is actually spent on the priorities that come from the town hall. So, you know, I think in terms of that, there's a, there's a conversation to be had across the spectrum in terms of, in terms of community infrastructure levy, the fairness, how it's distributed, what's done with it. And, and the problem that, the number one thing that chairs of the local area committees came up with was the inflexibility that the council uses to, and the bureaucratic process that is forced on us in terms of, in terms of the spending community infrastructure levy. And something, something needs to be done. So I'm going to have that rant over. We will get you some specific information on the SIL across the city and across the South Lac and see if we can get some clarity on exactly how it's being split at the moment and who's making those decisions. I don't know if anyone else has got a point to make on that. Then we've got the final question? Oh, sorry, Peter.
Yeah, obviously, year on year, the amount we get in SIL changes depending on how much work is going on in the city in terms of building and what have you. Because that SIL money, the community infrastructure levy... Because that, that seal money, that the community infrastructure levy comes in from developers as they develop various things. So, so it's not going to be the same year on year. So that will change, but how it's split, it doesn't change. So each ward at the beginning of May, is it, or June, will, will get allocated a certain amount of seal money to spend in that year. And that's the way that works at the moment. But as I say, year on year, it's going to be very different. We, we won't know until May or June of this year what we've got to spend next year.
Yeah, it's, it's fluid, the amount is fluid.
Yeah, sorry, I've got that wrong. Yeah, the seal, the seal is added to as and when and you either spend it or you don't as a ward councillor's, as a ward councillor's meeting. Yeah, the ward pot comes in on a yearly basis. Yes, I, sorry, I got that wrong first time round. Yeah, okay.
Joy, if I can ask you to come to the microphone?
Thank you. Just a very quick question about the mobile, it's not a speed camera, the speed sign. Has it been decided where it will go or are you still wanting suggestions from the public? I can't remember, I know it's been talked about before.
So the issue with, with the sighting of those was actually, it was because of the, because of the way it went, we already had those four sites for the old, what were they? Whatever they were called. And we, we had three in Beechford Green and then we inherited one from Grace Park. So we have four. And then part of the deal with the, with the speed indication devices is that the lac would buy them and then pay for them to be rotated because obviously they need to be rotated otherwise people get used to them. So we had four sites across each ward. Now, in terms of, and I say, so we, we used the sites that already had the posts and the, now what we're all we're doing after a year is doing an assessment on how they've worked, looking at all the data, all of those kind of things. What we may then have an opportunity to do is look at, are there any other sites where we could change the rotations? So the rotations were being paid for, we just need to look at, you know, and it's actually relatively cheap to attach them to land posts because it's all kind of modular and what have you. So there is actually an opportunity to move them at some point. Obviously we'll see how they're working in the locations we've got. I was going to say, where would you suggest?
I just thought I could ask, I could, I can ask people. I was thinking particularly around the schools. So I can think, you know, Green Hill Village, for example, can be used as a bit of a rat run. It's 20 miles an hour. I've, I've had a row with someone while I've been on school run before about what speed they were going. So yeah, so in Beechford Green Ward, they're already in the places that they were before. There, there's not any new ones.
So yeah, so in terms of, it's already been on Hempel Lane, it's now on Abbey Lane, isn't it? And then next it's going to Green Hill Avenue, is it? After that, Hookliff Wood and then back to, oh, it's on rotation six?
Yeah.
All right. So yeah, it's Lowes Road, Hempel Lane, Abbey Lane's currently on, then it's Green Hill Avenue, then Hookliff Wood Road, then Dinesh Lane. So it is, it is out by some of the schools and stuff. Oh, right. Also, yeah, Dinesh Lane is a new location. So we are, we are on with that. Um, thank you all very much with that. Go for it, why not?
So a quick plug, really should have done this at the beginning before people left, but we have a jobs fair here in this room on Tuesday, the 24th, 10am till 12pm. So if you do know anyone in the area that wants to attend the jobs fair, please pass on.
We'll make sure of that in the minutes and I'm sure all the people online will be, got their, got their information. Okay, so we now kind of have to formally go through the report. I think there's some stuff we need to do in terms of recommendations and then we're almost at the end.
Okay, thanks Simon. Yeah, so as I said, the presentation focused more on the spend to date. So that, based on the projects I outlined there, that left the committee with £30,000 out of the £100,000 project. So the report outlines proposal for the spend of that £30,000. So the proposal from the committee is to spend £11,000 to purchase two portable CCTV cameras. So they would be able to be used flexibly across the South Lac in areas where there's the serious issues with crime around social behaviour as a deterrent. And that would be, the £11,000 would purchase two cameras. They cost £4,500 approximately each, so about £9,000 and then a budget of £2,000 for the moving of those cameras. So obviously there's a cost associated with putting them in place and taking them back down again. So the committee wants to put aside some budget to be able to move the cameras around, around the area. But the locations of those cameras would be informed by, you know, conversations with the community and also I think the neighbourhood action groups that I referred to earlier. So it would be £11,000 for two cameras. The proposal is to also include £3,000 for community capacity building. So this is a bit reflective of, when I talked about the capacity building funding that we had, the £40,000 and the significant oversubscribing to that funding. The committee wanted to allocate a small pot of money to do, to do some more of that work really with community groups. So because we were unable to fund all of the groups that applied, the proposal is to put aside £3,000 to be able to fund some sessions and some development sessions for local community organisations. So we will talk to community groups about what's the best topics to focus them on. But again, it might be about using social media and communications, about increasing your number of volunteers. It could be about developing a long-term plan. It might be about developing a long-term funding strategy. So the funding can be used to bring in some, some experts to provide some sessions for community groups to build up the capacity and the skills and to support the voluntary community sector in the area. The third proposal is to put aside a budget of £16,000 for street art projects. So this would be to look at a number of priority locations across the South Lac. I can't see how many because it will just depend on the individual cost of individual pieces of street art and that will vary. But it's a, a budget then to look at, look at some priority locations, look at where street art would be an effective response to where there's been issues with graffiti. It's not always the case, it's the best, best response is to put street art. But we definitely have a number of locations. I think we've already heard from some community groups over the last six, eight months about some locations that where this might be effective. I think the intention would be to do this very much working with young people and engaging young people. So it wouldn't be a case of just wanting to put street art in. It would be about wanting to engage and work with local community groups, with local youth groups, potentially with the local schools and potentially with the inclusion centre to get young people actively involved in those projects. And there might be the potential, I guess, to look at, trying to add to that pot of funding to, to do a bit more of that engagement work. But that's something we'd need to explore. So that's the proposal really. So the £30,000 would be broken down into those three areas really. And that's just being proposed to, to the committee to, to approve.
Brilliant, thank you. Colleagues, any points you'd like to raise or, before we move to, great. And so really, I'd just like to say thank you to pretty much everybody. There's been so many people who've, who've had input into this or have taken part or have currently delivering stuff now out there that's been funded through this or have, you know, taken the initiative to make their organisation stronger or better or more forward looking. You know, this is, as I say, really what all my colleagues want to, want to get out of this process. I do have to thank Diane and her team for being kind of the centre of this process. But as I say again, it has been a massive team effort in terms of, in terms of getting to this point where we can to some degree breathe a sigh of relief because they've been pressing us to make sure that we spend all the money by the end of, end of March. So as I say, I thank, thanks to everybody and thanks to everyone in the VCF. Thanks to all the council officers and all the other organisations that we've been, we've been working with to deliver this. And thanks especially to my colleagues. It has been a truly cross-party and mostly good-tempered experience to get to this point. So thank you all very much indeed for that. If I could ask for kind of a nod or an agree or thank you very much for this, that we, so we're all good and legal when it comes to the money. So thank you very much indeed for that. And thank you all for sticking to the end. Thank you very much to coming. I hope you found the meeting useful. As always, we'll send around a short survey after this and please do leave your contact details with Adiola, especially if you have asked a question and you, we would want to send you a response. Thanks all very much. There is a mailing list, please do sign up for that. Next meeting is the 2nd of March at 6pm to 7.30pm at Medahead School. Hope to see you then. Thank you all very much indeed.